We can just have them, each one of them briefly introduce themselves, just real brief, and then we'll get on with the questions.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
All right, good morning, everyone. My name is Patty Mosley. I am a course resident of Fayetteville, Georgia, and District Four Fayette County. I am running for Fayette County Board of Education, District Four. I have twenty-eight years of educational experience. I can walk in a classroom as an administrator and immediately determine the climate and the culture of a school. I have the experience for that, for that. I can determine what an academic framework looks like in a classroom. And yes, I agree with the other candidate who was running for, I forgot the position, but he was saying about having smaller classroom sizes, paying teachers, love that. So what I definitely know is, I know what a school looks like. I can walk in, I can go inside a classroom, I can even teach a class if I needed to. I'm definitely certified in leadership, gifted and endorsed. I created STEAM Academy, a STEAM Academy business. I've created STEAM Camps. I'm a visionary. If there's something that needs to be done, I go do it. I take the initiative. I don't wait for someone to tell me what to do. I know that things need to be done. I am a graduate of Florida University, HBCU, so I've also conducted HBCU camps. The first one ever done. A master's in adult education, so I know how to work with adults, as well as learning how to work with students as well and administrators. With the twenty-nine thousand students that we have here in Fayette County, I noticed that the reading was sixty-five percent, students were reading at or above level. And I know that there are programs that can be in place or invented in this county, because I was a read-one-eighty teacher all-star. I moved students three and four grade levels. So I know that there's some area where students who are not reading, that that can be changed, that could be corrected, and we can move that score up. We do have a lot of A and B schools in Fayette County, but we do have one C school and a high school. Now, we'd love to see what kind of programs are in place or that could be put in place to help bring that school back up to a B and, of course, an A. My platform is equality and equity for all. And what I mean by that is, yes, everybody gets the same thing, but sometimes you've got to give some extra accommodations, extra modifications, and extra resources. No teacher has to drive a bus, no teacher has to drive a bus to take their students anywhere. That should be happening here in Fayette County. Also, technical programs. Some people may be college and career-ready, but in terms of career, it may be military. My daughter's in the military. My other daughter decided to go to college and get her two master's degrees, so she's a therapist here in Fayette County. But there are technical programs that students could also learn and be a part of to be better, and to be able to have a sustainable lifestyle as well. Also, safety in our schools. Of course, we've been hearing about the headlines of different things going on in our country, but I believe that there should be things put in place if there is something to happen. Some people may not agree perhaps with maybe having something in the building to, that can go off, the little manette things go off in a school, but you may have to do those things sporadically, because you want to be safe in our schools. As we are learning now, it could happen anywhere. So I definitely believe in making sure our schools are safe, putting things in place, make sure there's a communication device in place or an app so that we can reach out to our parents, making sure that the students are safe and communicate with their parents. My website is patty mosley dot com. You want to write that down? I'm also an author, so I write children's books as well. And I would definitely appreciate your vote. I'm teaching right now at Morehouse College, STEM. And so the kids are going to learn a lot of things. I would love to make sure that those things are discussed at our board meetings about how much better can people think STEM schools, because again, you want them to be college and career-ready. I'm a visionary. I have drive. I am compassionate, compassionate, and I have passion. I believe in students. This is what I do. This is all that I've ever done. And my attitude is, a child can win. A child can succeed. I taught kids who couldn't read. I taught in the penal system. I taught kids who came from foster care, group homes. If you put them in my, in my, in my U space, they can learn. So that's why I'm looking at their reading score. It could be higher. I've been awarded awards from the Commissioner Chair, a proclamation for creating something for teachers. It's called Teacher Appreciation Station. And again, I'm about being in the community. I've also helped to campaign for Stacey Abrams. I had a chance to meet her personally. I've also campaigned for Superior Court Judge. And I marched with John Lewis and Selma, marched with Shirley Franklin, and marched with King the Third. So I'm very involved in the community, I'm very involved in the lives of our students and our teachers and administrators, and I want to be a voice for them. Thank you so much, and I appreciate your vote. June twenty-first. Thank you.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Dr. Regina Day. You know, as I, as I stood there, my mind always go back to where I started. And I can see myself on those hot summer days, barefooted, walking on those rocks, and getting up every morning, going to work. My family instilled in me great values, hard work ethics. And most people, when they hear about me and hear my story, they say, "Well, how could you experience that growing up in the seventies and the eighties?" Well, that's where I got my start. And I honor my humble beginning. I came out of poverty. And that's why I believe every person can succeed if they are presented the opportunities to do so, because of what I came out of. So I always honor that, and I honor my paths to show people how I got here. I want to say thank you to the entire Fayette County community, because you helped me get here today. Without you, I would not be here in a runoff. So I'm, because it was a tough race, three highly qualified professionals, so thank you for your votes. And I'm going to be running June twenty-first, next week. I want you to get out there and cast your vote. I believe that every child deserves a quality education. I believe that every teacher should be well-paid, well-respected, and well-educated through continuous professional development. My background is in K-12 in higher education. I actually had the opportunity to teach at the university before actually teaching in K-12. I have taught senior programs, so I've taught people from every age. And I have taught people in the church. My husband and I have been married for thirty-one years now. We've been residents of Fayette County. By the end of this month, it will be sixteen years that we have been residents of Fayette County. Our sons have come up in the Fayette County educational system. I'm familiar with the educators, with the people, with the values that we share. And one thing that I know, we may not all agree on policies, but where we come together is with the values that we share. You know, last week was hot on the Fayette County Discussion Board. You know, I put a post out there and they tore it up, okay? So I came back and had to respond to some of those questions. And after I responded, they saw that we shared the same values. One guy told me, "If you go red, I'll vote for you," okay? I said, "Not today." So we share some of the same values. I have taught in career tech and agriculture education in the K-12 system. I'm a former business and computer science teacher. I have helped students in Georgia FBLA. I've taught over five thousand students in my career. I've mentored over five hundred students in Georgia Future Business Leaders of America. I've sat on the Georgia Future Business Leaders of America Board here for the state of Georgia, where we service more than twenty-seven thousand members. Georgia FBLA is the largest student organization in the state and one of the largest student organizations in the nation with over twenty-seven thousand members. Even during the pandemic, those numbers remained over twenty thousand, and I thought that was awesome. So I have, I was one of the members to make out the business education test for the state of Georgia, for business teachers. I have mentored teachers. I've worked as a department chair, not, not just on the K-12 level, but I've worked in, as a distance, he, back then, we called it e-learning. We wasn't using the terminology virtual education. We were saying distance education and e-learning. I want you to know, I am an e-learning prodigy, okay? I started when it, before it started. I've been involved with virtual education. Three main points of my platform, and some of you may have my card. If you don't have a card, Jared, would you please give them a card? Jared is my twenty-one-year-old campaign manager, okay? And he's been doing an excellent job, you know? I believe in getting young people involved. I have another young lady that works with me. They call her, she's called Ms. Prem Rose. She is an up-and-coming entertainer here in Atlanta, and she's been traveling touring, and that's why she's not here this morning. But she's also another young person. I believe in young people. I believe that we need to get them involved. Three points of my platform. I call it the PACH. You know, in education, we have all of these acronyms, okay? And it may not spell out P-E-A-C-H. It's really P-C-H. Number one, I believe in parental engagement. My parents didn't have a high school education, but do you know they emphasized education? They said, "If you want to get out of poverty, if you want to get off this bough, you, girl, then you're going to have to get your education." So when I went to school, I was focused, dedicated, and engaged. My parents are engaged. And I just want to encourage parents, "Look, you may not have a college degree, but that does not mean you cannot be engaged with your children." If Richard and Irene McCree did it with eighth-grade education and eleventh-grade education, I know these, if you have a high school education, I know you can do it. If you have some technical college experience, I know you can do it. And I really want, I don't want parents, and some parents feel like, "Well, I'm not good in math. I'm not good in reading. I can't help my child." But there are resources in the community that you can tap into. Don't, there's nothing wrong with saying, "I don't know." There's nothing wrong with saying, "I need some help." And parents need to feel comfortable in the system, saying that they need that assistance. Point number two, career readiness. I believe students should be ready before they leave the educational unasked school. Number three, a high-quality virtual option. Hear me well, high-quality virtual option. I didn't say make it a requirement for average students, because I know there are advocates for virtual education and there are advocates against virtual education. But we all know that 2020 caught us with our pants down, so we don't need to fall into that again. With the prices of gases rising, we don't know what's going to happen in an upcoming month. So we want to make sure that our students are well-provided for. We want to make sure our teachers are well-paid, well-respected, and well-educated through quality professional development. I'm asking you to go out and vote for Regina Day next week and June twenty-one. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to have Dr. Powell. Okay, I'm trying to get this mic out. Thank you. Okay, so FCDC rules, very brief answers. And so I'm glad that I allowed them the time that they needed to introduce themselves so that you can get to know who they are. And Dr. Powell's going to ask some brief questions, and then I'm going to give her the mic so she can just ask them on the side, and I'll have the candidates come in front of the screen to give very brief answers.
And let me know when I need to wrap it up, because I have several questions. So I'll look to you.
Okay.
All right, so you already answered the first question, so why are you running for school board? And we'll let that be, never say that. So what are your thoughts on the current and proposed budget? So it's been posted, the proposed budget for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And I would like for you to focus on the student transportation line item, which is a little over nine million dollars. Understanding the issues District Four is having with transportation. So again, what are your thoughts on the current and proposed budget? And give me a focus on that student transportation budget, and how would you leverage it as a school board member to assist with the issues going on in District Four?
Hope accounting accountable, equality and equity for all. If one district has what they need to sustain a successful district and school area, then the same thing should be for District Four. All districts should be, again, treated with equality and equity for all. If there is an issue, and as a board member, because I read, I research, I look up, and if I notice that there is something, there's some type of indiscrepancy, then I'm going to make a comment about that. I'm going to suggest that they look at that. I'm going to have a resolution, a solution as well. Because again, as a leader, you're not just going to be complaining and talking about things, but having a solution for the, for the problem. No school, for example, Fayette County High School, should have to hire their teachers to go get buses to take their students places. That will not happen as a board member here in Fayette County on my watch, because again, I believe in fairness. I believe in making sure that whatever is distributed in terms of that budget, that is distributed for all school systems, for the high schools, the middle schools, and the elementary schools. And therefore, students are basically benefiting from that. Thank you.
I would like to know, one question that comes to mind, how many teachers in Fayette County, especially from Fayette County High School or Sandy Creek in District Four, are actually driving buses? Do we actually have teachers driving buses? As, as I know there are bus drivers have been coming into the classroom to help with substitute teaching, but currently, we don't have teachers driving buses, and we're not going to get there, because they were hired to educate. They, and we putting too many responsibilities on teachers. They have enough to do. And they need to be focused when they walk into that classroom. Now, when we work as, as a board member, you have to work with people, and we know the current makeup of the board. So one of the things I would do is, is work with them, work across those invisible lines to make sure that students in District Four will receive equal access to everything that all the other students are receiving. At this time, I am not aware of any teachers in Fayette County that are actually driving buses. If they are, then they stopped today, because they don't need to drive school buses. That is really not the responsibility of the teacher. So what we need to do is come up with solutions to make sure that this does not happen. Raise the awareness with parents to make sure this does not happen. If parents have to carpool, let them carpool to make sure the children get to school on time. I will ensure that we do everything within our means so that teachers will never have to get on a school bus. They need to be ready, and I know what it's like being ready, going into that classroom. Thank you.
So understanding the demographics and what you're going to walk into as, if you're elected school board, what is the best way to address differences of opinion on the board or between the board and the administration? Do you, I need to explain that part. So basically, the principals get together, and they may have a difference of opinion than board members, okay? Because they do talk to principals of all the schools. So what is the best way to address differences of opinion on the board or between the board and administration?
As I said before, I'm a leadership certified, former PBI as coach, literacy coach, former administrator, active administrator. One of the things that I felt would be very important is to have what we call a superintendent advisory or a board advisory, where we have a team of people that is composed of principals, administrators, and coaches to work together. I also believe in having what we call town hall meetings, probably every nine weeks, to allow both administrators, teachers, and parents to come forward to discuss particular issues and concerns that they have or that, that we may not be privy to at that point. But definitely working as a team. That's how you're going to get a lot accomplished. And I'm just going to say, I also pray, I'm a praying person. So I pray and ask God to guide me directly in terms of what to say and how to handle things. So I don't go in their blind, I would never go in their blind side in terms of what they have to say. I also have the ability to get people to buy in, because I, the way, the way that I take the approach, talking to them, getting to know them, understanding their situation, and then building up that relationship. You've got to be able to, you know, it doesn't matter how many degrees you have, they have to know that you care. That goes for administrators and the board. When they know that you care, that they're going to reciprocate that, and then you'll get a lot more accomplished. Teamwork.
Each of us are fundamentally different. There are different personalities across the board. And one of the things that we have to recognize, that we share certain values, and we get down to a value base, we have to be able to respect one another. So even though the person across the table may not agree with my point of view, then I will still respect that person. And I think when we develop an atmosphere of respect for one another, regardless of our differences, then we can learn to work together. And one key issue is that we must listen. Listen to what the person said, is saying, instead of listening to try to come up with your response, and you're not hearing what they're saying. You have to actually listen to people. You know, I've, I've had great experience. I've been married for thirty-one years. You have to listen to that person, okay? And keep your mouth closed while they're speaking and try to understand what they're saying, okay? So with my, with my educational leadership certification, I believe I'm well-equipped to work with people. I, with my certifications, it's within cursi, I am well-equipped to work with different temperaments, and with my background, with everything disc, and working with different people, I'm well-equipped to work with people and understand personalities, understand their point of view, and being able to respect it. When you can put respect out there, you can really work with people. You have to show people respect. Thank you.
All right, so based on your vision for Fayette and our educational system, what would be your budget priorities? And I'll let you know first. So your budget priorities for our school system?
My budget priorities would focus on ensuring that all students are well-equipped in every classroom. There are funds, each student receives a per diem, and is, each student, each educator gets a certain amount of money to go into their classroom every year. It doesn't matter what the grade level is. I know in, in, in the high schools, every teacher gets a budget, and they're able to use that budget for professional development and also for their students. One of the items we should focus on is making sure that our students are well-equipped with the technology, and that not just, you know, people think, "Oh, my kid has a smartphone, they know how to use technology," but it's more to it than that. We need to make sure that they are well-versed with their, in English, with their writing skills, and also with their math skills, because all those skills is what it's going to take for them to be successful in life, to get that career and to go to college. All of those things are going to be what it takes for them to be successful. Thank you.
We set the timer for how long?
One minute, thirty seconds.
One minute, thirty seconds.
TD's going to get budgets. No, they don't get budgets. The administrators do. The administration, they get what we call either Title I funding or they get general funding per school. Then, of course, as a board member, we look at all of the budget, and then we disaggregate where that money goes, but it's supposed to be equally distributed. So I'll make sure as a board member that that is done. So one school will not get more than the other, and yes, some schools that may be considered a Title I school, they need to also invest in grant writers who can also write grants. I've been reading and noticing that there are a lot of grants that Fayette County did not take, take advantage of. So get that impressive grant writer to write grants to give more funds for the county. So my concern would be safety in the schools, making sure that there are highly equipped, highly qualified people in terms of security to make sure that these schools are safe. There's nothing like a parent being concerned and worried about if their child is safe at schools. So I definitely want to make sure that we put a little bit more funding in that area to make sure that there are themes that are in place, from training for teachers in terms of what to do, training for the police officers in terms of what to do if something happens. That needs to be taking place throughout the school year. And yes, making sure that there's possibly an opportunity to educate the students about things to do when it comes to being safe. So again, funding in terms of programs, reading. I would definitely like to see something else in terms of their reading, because for that particular score, that showed me that something's not happening when it comes to those students' reading. So I definitely want to get funding for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so this is a hot topic in Fayette. However, it has come to my attention that there is currently a school with a population of eighteen hundred students. There is another school down the street with only nine hundred students. What are your thoughts on redistricting? Name the schools?
Yes.
All right, so for example, McIntosh, the current enrollment at McIntosh is eighteen hundred students. The current enrollment, District Four, Sandy Creek, has nine hundred students, okay? So what are your thoughts on redistricting? And we also have Whitewater, that's not far as well, that is also overpopulated, and there are ways you can cut the lines where those students will go to Fayette County High School, so that will matter.
I also am not aware of what you were talking about with the District Four transportation issues.
So.
Yeah, so, and it's.
Redistricting balances the equation, that's the question.
Yeah, so redistricting balances the equation, and then I can address that, the transportation.
Okay. McIntosh is, is not a District Four school, okay? Sandy Creek is a District Four school. The physical location of the schools for Fayette County High School in Sandy Creek actually sit in District One. They don't actually sit in District Four as a physical location. This is something that the, the board would have to take a look at to see why it's done that way. The lines have been drawn and redrawn so that District Four, so that we can have a representation on the school board. That is one of the reasons why the lines are drawn the way they are, so that we can have some type of representation on the school board. So the board, the board would have to look at the numbers and figure out why do we have eighteen hundred at McIntosh and nine hundred at Sandy Creek? It could be, maybe people are leaving the area, and more people are migrating to the McIntosh area. And some people do have the right in the school district, parents can select where they want their child to go to school. I have, I know people live in District Four, their students go to Whitewater High School or some other high school. It's by twice. So maybe these parents are choosing to send their students to other schools. And when you get, if you, you're going to get some pushback with parents if they decide, "Well, that's, I want my child at McIntosh," or "I want my child at Whitewater." So I think the board would have to really take a serious look at that to see why we have such this great divide.
And just to ditto that, piggyback on that, yes, they do have school choice, is what it's called, to be able to choose different schools based on particular situations. And because Sandy Creek is a C school, I believe parents are given the choice to go elsewhere, and that may explain why there is a number like nine hundred, as you stated. They may have decided to go to another school, because that particular school is a C school. And that's why I know that there may be some funding, some grant right that can take place to help with this school so that we can retain people in that particular area. But again, if someone recognizes that a school is a C school, then they're going to move their children somewhere else, if that's their choosing. Again, we, as a board member, we would have to decide on how we're going to redistrict the particular areas. We can definitely look at and disaggregate the data. It's the number one thing you're going to have to do, is look at the data in terms of what's happening and why are there nine hundred kids at one school and eighteen hundred elsewhere. And then maybe there should be a particular protocol or cutoff in terms of taking more, taking all of those students, because again, again, when you have that many students like that, then there could be some problematic situations going on. That means you're going to have more students in classrooms. So as a board member, we're going to have to put a stop to allowing teachers, I mean, parents to go to certain schools. You're going to have to cut that off, because what's going to happen is, you're going to have an overcrowded classroom, and then the teacher's going to have a situation trying to educate those students. And then, of course, that's way too many kids. You need a smaller classroom size. The nine hundred at Sandy Creek, I think if we're going to work with that number, I would definitely like to see them get more funding to get that school from a C to a B and then an A.
All righty, we just break for just a minute. Thank you, we're just, and we're just going to have one more, one more question regarding the school board, and then we'll just move on with the rest of the.
Well, the last question will definitely be, you guys are both very qualified, so what differentiates you? Why should we choose you?
You should choose me, because I will be your voice. You vote for me, I vote for you. I make a difference. I work hard. I don't give up, and I do not quit. Yes, I have several degrees. Yes, I've done a lot in the community. Yes, my children are very successful. But none of that matters unless people know you care, and you genuinely care, not fake, but real. People can read you. I am about education on all levels.
I am about education on all levels, whether it's with the board, a student, a teacher, an administrator, as well as in the community. I'm very involved. So you definitely need to vote for me because I will make a difference. I will support you. I will support this community. I will support administrators and teachers. I am an advocate for teachers and students. I am a former literacy coach, a former teacher leader, teacher mentor. I've worked with superintendent. I also came from PG County, where, uh, Prince George County, where superintendent, the superintendent came from. So we have some similarities. I will work as a team player and I will be a change agent. Thank you. Well, I want to say thank you for giving me this opportunity to serve the great community of Fayette County. And I am more than honored to serve. One of the things that's at the foundation of my platform is to run with integrity, to run with honesty, to run with dignity.